Okay, the meeting was called to order at seven twenty-one. Please join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, notice that this meeting was mailed to the Herald News, the Record Office of County Clerk, and the College Community, and posted on the PCCZ website on September eighth, twenty-twenty.
Okay, roll call.
Trustee Duham, trustee Eskeche, trustee Marco.
Here.
Trustee Moody. Trustee Poe. Trustee Smith. Oh, trustee Poe's here. Okay, good.
I'm here, hi.
Okay, hi, trustee Smith.
Here.
Trustee Trevetti.
Here.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Here.
Chairman Nutter.
Here. Are there any questions, any corrections to the minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
I second, oh, Mike.
Roll call.
Trustee Marco.
Yes.
Trustee Poe.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Trevetti.
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis.
Yes.
Chairman Nutter.
Yes. Okay. May I have a motion on Resolution One to approval of the August eighteen, twenty-twenty minutes as corrected? And the six.
No, no, you can skip that, Harvey.
Oh, I can skip that one, okay.
We're good, we're good.
Okay, Steve, you're on.
Okay, well, first, we have the honor of introducing our new alumni representative, who is no stranger to you because she has been before the board many times in her, in her various roles at the college, and it was great to have her as part of PTK and everything else. So Sonya, you want to introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, my name is Sonya Valen, and I graduated at PCCC with an associate's degree with a major information technology, web and mobile development as an option. And now I was transferred to NJIT. And there, my major is computer technology biomedical informatics. And my minor is going to be web and mobile. And I'm still an alumni taking classes at PCCC.
All right.
And now serving as representative.
And we are, we are very happy to have you.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And Sonya and I spoke last week, and she's ready to go, I'll tell you. I don't think we've ever had one more enthusiastic to start, and we've had some great ones, so we're happy to have you. So let me just update everybody on what's going on. Obviously, we started school last week. It's been wild, to say the least. It's, obviously, this, you know, we've never done some of this before. We have about ten percent of our courses on campus. So it's nice having some students in the buildings, which is, which is good. Everything seems to be going fairly well. I mean, there's, there's new adventures every day, but things are going fairly well. Our enrollment is down about ten percent right now over last year. Almost all of it is new students. And of the new students, quite a few is a big decline in English as a Second Language program. I guess not a surprise. But our continuing students, we're pretty much even with last year at this point. So continuing students have done well. So once we're here in the spring, came back. Only new ones, but we're still registering at this point. We have a twelve-week semester, which we expanded the course offerings for, which start on the thirtieth of September. And, you know, we're hoping to get more students into that, and it's just going to be a year like, unlike any other year. And we'll, we'll get through, but I will tell you, everybody at the college has been just working incredibly hard to get stuff done, and, you know, people have pulled together as a team. And I think we're serving our students fairly well at this point. But lots and lots of challenges every day. I saw, I saw Mike earlier today, and he asked me the question if we had any cases on campus. Well, since, since I spoke to you, we have one. One of our ESL students told their professor today that she had a positive diagnosis. But we had a protocol for this worked out, that immediately that class would become a remote class for the next two weeks until things resolve themselves. So the system worked as it should. The students in the class were notified that one of their classmates, you know, had come down. Hopefully, you know, hopefully, that's it. I, I, I think we're maybe one of the last colleges to have a case, but it's going to happen. But, you know, fortunately, the numbers in New Jersey continue to be very low, and hopefully, that will continue, and it'll be good for us. So moving along, you know, one of the things that I, I think we're probably most proud of at this point is the fact that we haven't let this situation stop us from moving the college forward. I mean, that was really important, because it would be very easy to get into a just crisis management type of mode right now, where all you're doing is, you know, keeping up every day. But we really worked hard to try and keep things moving at this point, and I think we've done a good job so far. But I've asked two of our vice presidents tonight to give you, talk about what their plans are for the year in terms of moving forward. And we'll have the other two next month do it. But Jackie, you want to get started?
Okay, thank you. Chris, do you have my PowerPoint, or are we not going to be able to do that?
I have, I have a PowerPoint, Dr. Kneve.
Okay.
I'll bring it up for you right now.
So, so anyway, the president asked me to put together the annual operational plan for academic and student affairs for twenty-twenty-one. And of course, as you know, nothing seems normal. And this is the plan for now, but I guess it could change if something else happens. But at any rate, this is our annual operational plan. Change that slide, Chris. Okay, and what I tried to do is I tried to relate all of our activities to the strategic plan of the college. So this one relates to opportunities for timely completion of academic programs. So these are some of the things that we're going to do for the, for the year. And the first one, I think, is really interesting, course schedule consultant and revision. And I always say, never let a crisis go unused. And so what we found out from this crisis is that we need to take a broad look at the course schedule and perhaps find an outside source to give a, give a look and help us with it. So we're going to probably look for an outside consultant to give us a little help and do some revision on the course schedule. Number two, we want to revisit registration and advisement again. You know, we've learned a lot from this crisis situation. We want to make registration run smoother, advisement process better. And the third item also is related to student advisement. We have a student planning module. Where students are on the, using software, the students, we have, have their plan on our, on the computer, and a student can come in and change the plan, or revise the plan. We think that that module can do more than what we're doing with it. And so that's something else we're going to work on over the year. The fourth item also has to do with the crisis, and what we found is that we're delivering courses in person remotely. And, and now we're going to add something a little bit different. We're going to use Zoom. We're going to have faculty come into the, to the college and use a classroom to do a Zoom class with students in their home, but also simultaneously have in-person students in that class. And so we're going to be trying that in the ten-week semester. I, I sort of got Professor Jennifer Gasparino to help me with that. She's going to try a class where we have students on Zoom and students in the classroom, and we're going to see if this might work for us in other classes. And last but not least, we do need to have a prior learning assessment program, which takes into consideration learning that happened before the student came to college. We can give them credit for it. In some cases, we already have that program. The firefight firefighters, if you graduate from the County Fire Academy, we will give you, I think it's nine credits for what you learn in the Fire Academy. We also have that in the Police Academy, where they can obtain some credits for, for graduating from that academy. We also give credit for EMT. If a student is in EMT, we'll give them credit for that. But we want to expand the program. We should be doing more in that area. Okay, next slide. Okay, strategic goal two involves new programs and initiatives. And these are some, these are probably the programs we're going to work on. I did forget one, but I'll just, I'll run through that verbally. The first one, again, we continue to be interested in ultrasound technology. And you probably are very accustomed to, to seeing that in your own doctor's offices. It's very popular. It's just about in every dot urologist. It started really in OB, but now it's just about in every doctor's office. And I just want to add one other personal note to this. I was taking a tour of a proprietary school for, with a friend who represents them. And I was really shocked at the ultrasound program that they had. It was huge. And the doctor that was running the program gave me a little tour and told me that he suspects that ultrasound is going to be much more fully developed in the future, and that ultrasound would be able to identify malignant tumors over benign. However, of course, it's not going to do the cell typing, but it could cut down on some of the more, the, the, maybe biopsies or some other interventions that patients are having done now. So, and so I think that the future, it's a good future for ultrasound. The next is hemodialysis technician. This is going to be a certificate program of thirty credits. We've been in talks with Davida, which is a big agency here, I think it's all over the country, that provides dialysis for patients. And so we, we're going to probably get that up and running maybe by January. And then welding, we, you know, we would like to get welding up. People, students ask about it. We frequently get calls about welding. When are we going to start our welding program? So we're hoping to get that up and running this year, at least by September of twenty-twenty-one. The program that I didn't list, but I do want to make mention of, is supply chain management. And so we do want to look at that, take a look at that. We think that that was on the list of needs analysis that we looked at recently. We're going to take a look at that program, maybe a certificate, or maybe a degree. But, but we'll have more information on that as we go along in the year. The other thing that has come to light is that, you know, we're involved in a potential grant and partnership with PCTI. And we are looking at a potential building, which would be identified as healthcare. And we want to investigate occupational therapy assisted and physical therapy assisted partnering with PCTI. One other thing I do want to mention, you know, anytime you get involved in ultrasound or occupational therapy or physical therapy, it takes a little longer to put those programs up and get them up and running because you're dealing with specialized accreditor in addition to having the state of New Jersey approve your program. So sometimes that takes a little longer. I do actually have my two retired deans right now looking into ultrasound and starting to write up some information. But we are still at least a year away on that. Okay, Chris, okay. More on innovative programs, some of the other things we're going to do. We're going to be renovating some of the science laboratories, particularly because, and you'll hear about this in the next slide, we want to expand our programs with Ramapo. We want to have a three-plus-one biology program, and we do need to do some upgrades in the science laboratories to get that going. We want to look at, again, this goes back to what we learned from, from the pandemic. We want to look at some of our low-enrolled programs, options, and existing, existing options, options in existing programs to see how we can increase the enrollment. Maybe we're thinking of giving students a schedule. They say they want a certain program. We would give them a schedule that they would have to follow for two years. And so that that might increase the enrollments in some of the courses. Revision of general ed, as you may know, the general ed curriculum, which is a state, for the community colleges, it was formulated at the state level, actually, through a process where all of the faculty from the eighteen community colleges got together and came up with the general ed curriculum. And so now, after ten years or so, it's time to relook at it and perhaps drop the number of general ed credits in the associate and arts degree. So if we were to do that, at the state level, if we were to decide on that, that would mean then that we would have to do a lot of curriculum revision. And last is the implementation of the watermark assessment software. And that really goes back to something the president said, and it's really important. You know, you, even though you're in a crisis, you have to continue to move forward. You have to continue to do the things that you need to do in order to meet the accreditation criteria. And so this is one of the things that we need to, to, we actually bought a different software. This is a different software than what we were using. We were using a software called TK twenty. We feel that this is a lot easier to use, and it also has a middle states component. So we're going to be training people on middle state or watermark to meet middle states criteria. That means assessing the curriculum and making sure that students are learning what we say that they're learning. Okay, I think this is the last slide, close slide coming up. Okay, and this is strategical four, optimizing strategic partnerships and outreach. And so, of course, you know about the three-plus-one in Ramapo, that we have three existing curricula that we're going forward with in September, criminal justice, humanities, and psychology. And, you know, I might add that it was, it took a lot of work to get it up and running on both sides. I think we have a great relationship with Ramapo now. But we do have it up and running, even though we did it through a pandemic. We are going to be offering courses, the third, third year of criminal justice humanities and psychology here at the college. And we are proposing in the future, and I think Todd's going to talk to you about a grant after my presentation. We're proposing that we then increase the number of curricula, and we're proposing biology and data science. And I spoke to the provost there last week, and I said, you know, we really need to add on some science courses. We have a big STEM program. Actually, what I said was, she's missing the boat. We have a big science program here at the college. And what we really need to do is get involved in the science baccalaureate. It's over at Ramapo. So I think they'll probably be interested in doing that. The other side of this slide talks about two-plus-two at Ramapo, which is the R Associate in Human Services students graduate and can go into the BSW program. And this is what we call a two-plus-two, which means that we teach the first two years of the curriculum, and then the second two years, they are Ramapo students. However, they are going to be taking some of the Ramapo courses right here on campus. One thing I didn't mention, but I think you probably remember it from other presentations, is that when the students are in the three-plus-one program and doing their third year with us, it's at our tuition. So they're saving about eight thousand dollars a year by staying with us. But in the two-plus-two program, in the sec, in the third year, they become Ramapo students. And this goes back to the accreditation. There is an accredited, specialized accreditation for BSW programs, bachelor's in social work. And so, you know, they're only going to allow certain things. So they're, they're going to, they're going to be doing the two-plus-two. It's still an advantage for our students because they don't have to leave the college. They can stay here, but again, they are still considered Ramapo students, and they pay Ramapo tuition. And that's going to start in January twenty-twenty-one. And a couple of other things, I'm probably going over my time. We are trying to, we, we had some contact with a program called Cold Springs Harbor, which does a lot of hands-on genetic lab, barcoding, and they do a lot of education in terms of, you know, genetic genetics to high school students. And so that they were interested in perhaps developing a lab on our campus. I think it was at the PSA. Yeah, but we, you know, I think through the pandemic, we haven't really gotten that started. So we're trying to, you know, get that going again, so that they would develop their own, they would, we would, we would use our space, and they would put a lab there, and we would have a lab assistant. We could bring in not only our students, but high school students to learn about genetics. It's really a good, a good program. And then last but not least, we have an early college initiative going on where students can come and take their last semester, or their last year of high school at the college. That's just starting up. It's Pacific High School and one of the academies, and we're hoping to expand that. And that's it.
All right, any, any questions for Jackie? There's a lot going on, as you just. Before we get to Todd, I just wanted to ask if trustee Marco would talk a little about something. I'll just set it up for him. You know, when the, you know that we're doing things differently in New Jersey this year, that we're doing a nine-month budget for the new fiscal year, which instead of starting on July first, is starting on August first. The governor released his budget proposal in late August, and the cut for community colleges would be about thirty-one percent in the proposal that he gave. That would be almost a two-million-dollar cut for us if that were to, to go through. So obviously, a lot of folks have been working very hard over the past couple of weeks to, you know, it's now in the legislature's hands in terms of what the final budget is going to be. We think we've made a lot of progress. We think we're right where we need to be right now. But, you know, a lot could happen in the next two weeks in Trenton, so Dennis?
Good. Thanks, Dr. Rose. Well, you may all remember, I had sent out an email a while back on that the New Jersey Council of County Colleges had put together a advocacy website. And so like Dr. Rose said, this is, you know, we're now on the twenty-yard line, about to go into the red zone. The budget's got to be approved by the September thirtieth. There's been budget hearings going on, and, you know, Lynn Nowak, who's the lobbyist for the NJCC, has done a yeoman's job scheduling meetings with all the different key legislators who are on the budget committees on the Senate and the Assembly side. And so, you know, if you look at the, the original budget that was extended for three months, and you look at the new one that's being proposed, the total would come to about fifty-nine million dollars of state aid across all the eighteen community colleges being cut. So, you know, the legislators are being receptive. The president stepped up to the plate and started making the phone calls, sending out op-eds. And so we've been asked now to get our trustees, and also, you know, they've reached out, I believe, to student government representatives.
Yes, they have.
Yep, and also alumni associations. And so they've gotten only about two-hundred-and-fifty-three letters to date. And if you recall, when you go on this website, it's very easy. The letter is already drafted. All you got to do is check off those legislators that are, you know, you in our district. And I believe for most of us, it would probably be Senator Nellie Poe, Assemblywoman Siobhan DeSumter, and Assemblyman Benji Wimberly. Just check them off, and if there's other legislators that you know, you could also go, also could send them a letter too. So, you know, I'll be doing that tonight after this meeting. But I wanted to give everybody a heads up that we need everybody to come and step up to the plate. If we can get a hundred percent participation of all the trustees, that would be terrific. So thanks for teaming this up for me, Dr. Rose, and we'll see what kind of response we get this time.
All right, we're, we're hopeful. But again, you never know what, two weeks is a lifetime in Trenton, and it's hard, hard to tell what will happen. But I think we like where we are right now in terms of getting it done. But boy, we certainly don't want to be in this position.
No, we don't.
Of having that kind of cut, so.
And you can guarantee that other areas that have been cut. Gabriel Health, Mental Health, chiming in, Board of Ed, school boards. I mean, so we've got to get our, we got to get our effort out there.
Yep. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Todd.
Chris, am I able to share the screen here?
Yeah, you will, right, you should be able to now.
There we go. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Rose, and good evening, everyone. I'm happy to share an update on institutional advancement, which includes the grants area, the State County Community College Foundation, and also our marketing and communications area. We've had some wonderful news this past summer, just over the past few weeks, on several of the federal grants that we submitted. We're being funded for an existing Student Support Services program from the U.S. Department of Education. And in addition, we're receiving two brand-new Student Support Services grants, one for ESL and the other for STEM and Health Science students. And we also just heard, probably less than two weeks ago, President Rose was contacted by Congressman Pascal's office that we're receiving a new Title V Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant from the U.S. Department of Education. So the Student Support Services Grants already went into effect on September the first, and the Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant will go into effect on October first. The Student Support Services Programs, they serve low-income first-generation college students. The existing program that we have, we've had it since two thousand and four, and it serves a hundred and sixty students. And this year, we'll be receiving two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for that, and this is a five-year grant. The SSS ESL program is brand-new. We'll be able to serve a hundred and forty students through that initiative, and we'll be receiving approximately two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars this year. And the SSS STEM Health Science, again, is a new program. We'll serve a hundred and twenty students through that initiative, and the amount will be similar to the ESL program, two-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars that we'll be receiving. So in total, we went from this past year serving a hundred and sixty students through our Student Support Services programs to this year now serving four-hundred-and-twenty students. And we went from this past year receiving roughly two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars in Student Support Service funding to now receiving close to eight-hundred thousand dollars per year for Student Support Services programs. And again, these are five-year commitments, and what's nice about the SSS programs is that, you know, our experience is that once you get them, you usually never lose them, because when you go into future competitions, you always have these prior experience points that go with you. So it gives you a competitive advantage in future competitions. Similar to the Educational Opportunity Fund model, SSS participants typically have much higher retention rates and program completion rates than students in the general student population. And that's because they receive such close personalized attention. They receive academic instruction, tutorial support, academic advising, career counseling, and student success coaching, financial literacy, transfer advising, a whole range of services that are surrounded with our students. And we have staff in place who are working with, you know, these small numbers of students, so it can really have a great effect on their retention and completion. The SSS students can participate in a summer bridge program to prepare them for enrollment at the college. They're part of an SSS club, and we'll have clubs also for the SSS STEM and the ESL components as well. And students are eligible to receive grant aid, which can help to offset some of their educational expenses. As I mentioned, we received the brand-new Title V Developing Hispanic Serving Institutions Grant that we're excited about, two-point-nine million dollars over the next five years. The purpose of these grants is to assist colleges like ours in expanding educational opportunities and improving educational attainment levels for Hispanic and low-income students. As Jackie mentioned, this grant is specifically focused on the partnership that we have with Ramapo. So under the leadership of Dr. Rose and Dr. Kneve, the timing was just perfect, that this partnership came into the place and really worked out nicely with our opportunity to be able to apply for a Hispanic-serving institutions grant. with our opportunity to be able to apply for a Hispanic serving institutions grant. So the resources will expand upon this model partnership. There will be four areas where we'll be investing resources. Curriculum alignment and pathways alignment. Jackie mentioned about the program areas that we're looking to develop, where students can be working towards the bachelor's degree. There's going to be a lot of synergy across our faculties between the Ramapo faculty and the Passaic faculty, faculty professional development, summer institutes, a lot of work that will be happening there. There's also, what's really interesting is an emphasis on applied learning experiences. So the types of experiences that a lot of Ramapo students have in their first two years of their education, our students will be getting those same experience. So course-based projects, internships, micro internships, undergraduate research experiences. Just so we're sure that they'll be able to make a smooth transition into upper division coursework. Ramapo will be hiring a part-time career resource person and also a part-time transfer specialist who will be working exclusively with our students over the next five years in helping them, prepare them for the bachelor's degree. And what's really nice is that they're going to be aligning all of their resources. Particularly, they have a wonderful career resource center, the Cahill Resource Center. So their vast network of employers and alumni will be connected with our students. So, you know, these are experiences and opportunities that our students don't necessarily have right now due to limited resources in those areas of the college. By creating this kind of a partnership, we're able to expand those opportunities for our students. As with every grant that we've ever gotten at the college, there are so many people that are involved that really make it possible for us to put together a competitive application. And with these particular grants, the academic and student affairs area came up big for us, as they always do. Institutional research and also staff in our institutional advancement area. So I just wanted to recognize these folks for the great effort that they put forth in helping us put together our application. Cassandra Davis and Stephanie Velasquez, who work in our current student support services program. Dr. Basil Stasis and Tanisha Taylor were instrumental in helping us conceptualize the SSS ESL program. Dr. Donna Stankevich and also the STEM department at the college were very involved in helping us think through what the SSS STEM program would look like. Because, you know, these are programs that were brand new to the college. So we really had to think through how they were going to be different from the SSS program that we currently have. Greg Fallon is always a wonderful resource and was helpful in making some connections with the Ramapo folks and was involved with that grant. And faculty members across all of those program areas that we're going to be working with Ramapo on. We had focus group sessions with those faculty members, every single one of them, to really get a sense of their vision for how this partnership is going to work and what were the resources that they would need to be able to make this successful. Our institutional research area, they're always wonderful on every single project that we, we put together. But with these grants, you know, we really taxed them and, you know, we asked a lot of them in this particular project. So Justin Hall and Jeanette Lim were just fantastic. And then in our institutional advancement area, Oslum Rosenides, our grants project specialist. Michelle McQuade, who's our assistant director of grants management. These are two individuals who, they just roll up their sleeves with all of these projects. And they were just so, so involved in this and we couldn't have done it without them. So just I really appreciate that great effort on the part of so many people. Now turning to the foundation. You know, this past year has been very difficult, obviously, for many of our students and for their families who may have lost employment, lost income, just the financial devastation of the pandemic. So the foundation, our response to that was that we wanted to create 500 scholarships for this current academic year. That was our goal. It's a, it's a big goal, it's a bold goal, but we felt that it would really have an impact. So we put together a campaign that we're referring to as our 500 Stories of Hope Scholarship Campaign. And we've just recently launched it. So far, we've raised a little over $100,000, $105,000. So, you know, we're really happy with the early returns. We received a major grant from NASA for $80,000. And that's going to fund 40 to 50 scholarships for STEM students. These will be NASA scholarships in the amount of $1,500 to $2,000. In terms of leadership, we were able to organize a subcommittee of our foundation board of trustees who have been really helpful in terms of connecting us to prospective donors and helping us identify who may be interested in participating in this particular campaign. So what's been really exciting for us is that we've been making connections with donors that we haven't previously had relationships with in the past. We've actually had private foundations reach out to us. They found out about the campaign and it was something that they wanted to get involved in. And we've also had some of our long-term donors see this as a wonderful opportunity to put together a named scholarship for this particular year and be able to increase their level of giving over past years. And they tell us that this is something they would like to do every year. They, they love the idea. It's very personalized approach to fundraising. We have donors who are interested in particular types of students that they want to support, whether it's business students or STEM students or nursing students. They can be as creative as they want in terms of who they would like to fund. So this is exciting. Again, we recognize this, this school of 500. Right now, we're about 20 to 25% on our way towards that goal. The $105,000 that we've raised accounts for roughly 100 scholarships. But we're giving ourselves over the course of the academic year to raise this money. But obviously, there's a sense of urgency. The students need that money now, and we want to get the money into their hands right now. This is gonna, you know, require an amazing team effort. We're reaching out to all of our various constituencies that are connected to the college and asking them to get involved. So if anybody knows of anyone that you think might be interested in participating in this campaign, we're accepting contributions of all sizes. We can do named scholarships for our students anywhere in the $300 to $500 range or more. But all the contributions will go towards those scholarships and will really make a difference for our students and also for our enrollments at the college. That's what is really driving this as well. We recognize that finances are the number one reason why students are either not able to enroll or not able to continue their enrollment. And this is a way that we can address that. Finally, marketing and communications area. This summer, there was an amazing collaboration that took place between the marketing area and our information technology area. And I think it was truly one of the most incredible results that I've ever seen as long as I've been at the college. The way that they came together to update our college website, which is something that people have been really looking for, for quite some time. And if you have a chance to look at that college website, I think you'll agree that it's something you would just be so proud of. It just represents, and it's such a wonderful reflection on the college. But it was really the efforts of these individuals that I've identified in our marketing area. Meredith Behrens took a leadership role, Paige Saunders and Linda Telesco. And the IT area really helped to drive this effort. David Zombrano, we all know that he's got these amazing IT skills. But he's also, he thinks like a marketing and communications person. And just his talent, it was just, you know, so impressive throughout this. And Fatmir Fonda, so it was just a really great collaboration. And they did this, you know, a very quick turnaround, but they were pushing to make sure that this would all be done by the fall semester to, again, help drive our enrollments. But also, I really want to thank Brad Morton, Vice President of Information Technology, because Brad made this a priority and he really allowed his staff to get engaged in this activity. And I know that he has so many projects going on. And to be able to allow his staff to be able to devote the time that was needed to make this happen and for him to provide that, that guidance and encouragement throughout this process. I just really appreciate all that he did. Thank you very much. Appreciate having the opportunity to provide you with the update.
Hey, Todd?
Yes.
First, I love the mustache. I got to give you credit on the stash. Second, what's that called? He had a stash, right? Dr. Rose, you're looking at me like I'm crazy. It looks like a stash.
No, no.
Oh, well, I got, all right. But can I, what's that called? Can I, can I commit to one scholarship between my wife and I for 500 bucks, whatever? Whatever you might need it. So it's a commitment. I want to make that commitment. I always forget, so I say it publicly, so you could hold me to it.
Thank you so much, thank you.
All right, so I don't know, I don't know how to do it, but whatever you need, I can write a check. I can do whatever. But let, let me be hell to the fire now, because I forget to do this.
Yeah, what I could do is I can follow up, you know, with our campaign materials and contribution forms and share that with you. And, and so you'll have that.
Perfect, so whatever we need, just I, hold me to it, because I forget. So thank you for that.
Okay.
I know we're doing great work, so thank you.
I won't forget, I'm committed to three.
Thank you, Sharon, wonderful.
Yeah, look, let me, let me just say one thing. You know, Todd thanked everybody else and they all deserve their thanks. But, you know, Todd's leadership on this is amazing. You know, when, when, I don't think there's any college in the state of New Jersey that had our results this summer from, from these grants that came out. You know, I told a couple of people, there's been one interesting thing that's happened under the current administration in Washington, is that basically they suspended most of the rules that there are in terms of grants. You could only have one grant at a time, and you know, you had to stay out if you had a grant. Well, they, all those rules are gone. And now it's just, you know, whoever does the best job gets the money. And Todd always does the best job. So Todd is always getting the money. And, you know, I, does anyone else have three trio grants in the state of New Jersey, Todd? I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so. And how many Title Fives do we have now?
We have three now.
Yeah.
You don't have to drive back and forth from Pennsylvania anymore.
He's still doing it, he's still doing it. So we just couldn't be more proud of what everybody has accomplished this summer. This is going to really impact our students in a great way. So we're excited about it. Any questions for Todd?
I just want to say, Todd, kudos on the website. That was, I've been involved with other organizations that have had to upgrade their website. And it was a tortured process. I know it's not easy to do it. And I think it really looked sharp. So good job.
Yeah, again, the marketing folks in IT, it was just amazing. I almost feel like that would have cost a lot of money for the college. We had somebody from outside the institution do that. But for them to bring together their collective talents and creativity, just, I think it just impressed everybody.
And if we went outside, it wouldn't have been as good.
Yeah, that's right.
These people, yeah, this, this is, the time they did it in is amazing. So we're really happy about it. So thanks to everybody. Let me just quickly go through, we have a couple of purchases, goods and services this month. Nothing, nothing too exciting. Last month, we had a lot of exciting stuff on the agenda. You know, this month, we're buying library books and things that open the gates at the door of the parking garage and stuff like that. So nothing too exciting there. Mike, do we, do we need executive session? Or is this something you could just tell people right now? You're muted.
Yeah, I can tell them right now.
Yeah.
So about a year and a half ago, we put out a RFP for the flagpoles that appear, that appear, that are in front of the main entrance to the college at the corner of Memorial and Broadway. And also smaller flagpoles that are on the side of the building where we park on the Ellison Street lot. The three flagpoles that are at the main entrance, and they are huge. They go up over two stories. Were discolored from the start. And we notified the installer, the contractor about this. And his attitude was, pay me everything you owe me. And then I'll talk to the manufacturer. And oh, by the way, we may have to take the poles out in order to correct the problem. So he put that in writing. I responded four times, five times.
At least.
Telling him, telling him, listen, if you're going to take the poles, I'm paying for nothing. Let me know what the problem is, because he admitted he didn't know what the issue was. Then we can work something out. Last communication I had with him was at the beginning of the pandemic, when we were all under a lockdown order essentially. And I said, listen, I realize the manufacturer isn't going to be able to come out and analyze the polls. Once the, the order's lifted, we want to get the manufacturer out there and we'll work something out. Never heard back from him. The, last week, we got a summons in the mail from a court in Nebraska, which is where this company is headquartered, and suing us for the full amount of the, the purchase order plus interest at the rate of one and a half percent. I immediately called the attorney in Nebraska saying, listen, you got no business suing us in Nebraska? We're not in Nebraska. Her comment was, well, but you did business with a company in Nebraska. I said, no, you did business with a college in New Jersey. You came to New Jersey. We didn't go to Nebraska. You've got no jurisdiction. I then said to her, listen, I want to resolve this. Let's get the manufacturer out there. Tell me what the issue is. I'll work something out with you. Haven't heard back yet. So that's the update. Just so you know, the, the original POs for $24,000 and change, they're claiming interest, which is not, definitely not in the PO at all, not in our RFP, not in our, our form purchase order of $3,000. We'll see if we hear back. Hopefully, they'll wise up and, and I'm hoping that now that I have an attorney that I can speak to, we can work something out. But that's the update on that.
Any, any questions for Mike? All right, Harvey, I'm turning it back to you.
Okay.
Code of Number Three, Resolution Number Three.
Number, I'm, I'm looking at this way. Oh, Resolution Number Three, where am I? Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. That's right, because we didn't have the.
Correct.
May I have a motion on Resolution Numbers Three, Consent Agenda Items A through C. Roll call.
Move it.
And your second.
Second. Call.
Okay, trustee Marco?
He left.
Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Trust, Vice Chair Tanis?
Yes.
Chairman Nutter?
Yes. Okay. Are there any remarks from the trustees or the public? Okay. Mike, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Hello? Can anybody hear me?
Trustee Poe?
Yes.
Trustee Smith? Trustee Trevetti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tanis?
Yes.
Chairman Nutter?
Yes. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
All right, thanks, everybody.